Agenda this morning, so we'll call this Committee of the Whole, August 27. To order, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item for discussion this morning is the 2026 Fee Schedule. A call upon Andrew Bremseth, and the requested action is a recommendation to the council to adopt the 2026 Fee Schedule.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor. Thank you, members. This is our annual discussion about the fee schedule. Typically, you see Bill and/or Sandy in front of you. I'm subbing for them this morning. Bill will be at the council meeting on Monday, so if we have unfinished business or lingering questions, we can defer to that. But what my intention is this morning is to just run through the proposed changes, answer any questions that you guys may have, and then hope to move this forward to Monday night. So, starting on page three, you'll see our first changes. And Lynn's going to kind of follow along with me here on the screen, so you guys can be looking at the same thing if you don't have it in front of you. What we did in the building department, and we have Jason Schutze here today who can answer any questions that you may have, but essentially what we did was combine the mechanical and plumbing sections. If you look on page four, we just kind of struck out almost the entirety of that page, which was the plumbing side of things, and we combined that with mechanical to make it more streamlined. We also put in a section there. You can see, if you go up one page, Lynn, with like the water line replacement, some of those standard things, the water heater change outs, booster pumps, had a standard fee inserted in there, which is covering our costs and is reflective of industry standards. One of the things, kind of in this line of work, there's been a lot of noise about cities charging too high of fees, and so we want to be very mindful of charging reasonable fees, fees that, you know, cover our cost and that remain competitive and not get, not get out of control with building fees. We don't want to be known as the city with higher fees or, you know, hard-to-do-business kind of thing. So, I'll maybe pause there and see if there's any questions. That's, that's kind of the section we made a lot of big changes in, and if, I don't know if Jason wants to add or just wait for questions.
Any questions of Jason or Andrew on the plumbing and mechanical?
I guess Jason, does it make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Came from him. So I'm not, so.
I don't recognize the initials RPZ and PVB for installation.
So those are backwater valves, stuff that we put on water lines so that we don't get feedback from larger buildings into our system with pesticides or chemicals, so it's a protection. So we, you know, some, some irrigation systems on sprinkler systems have to have a PVB in order to protect backflow, so that that system can't push water back into our city municipal water line.
Jason. I've had people come to me and maybe some larger commercial, larger garages. Would it be appropriate for the city to sell these water meters, the water meters, to the individuals, or is that something that the city just continues to rent?
So, I don't do a lot on the utility side, but it makes a lot of sense just to rent them, because we have to upkeep a lot of equipment within those. But Public Works would be able to answer that a little bit better, or utilities. But I think it makes more sense to rent them, so we can upkeep the equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Moving on to page five, bottom of page five, there's just a small notation there, repair frozen meter, adding a $50 fee to cover our costs, have to go out and handle that. Guy, do you want to add anything on water meters quickly, or we're good?
No.
Okay.
Consistency in our reading system is one thing, why we don't want a person, a private party to own their meter.
And why was that again? I'm sorry.
For reading purposes. We have a reading system that reads all the meters electronically, as you drag down the road. So if somebody owns their own meter, they might buy something that's not compatible.
Well, I would think that they would have to buy it from the city, is my, my contention. And that would be the, the meter versus the city owning them. And I don't know what the rent is, I don't know what the kind of a return on investment that is. It's the concept.
We can talk more with Bill and Sandy.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to community development on page six. Clara is recommending a few changes there, actually looking at conditional use permit fees going down from $400 to $350, and then zoning amendments, map or text from 700 to 500, and then people requesting a zoning letter, the cost of that going from 50 to 25. Clara did a look-back analysis of five years to see what our fees were, what our costs were, and then also compared to the fee schedules of Alexandria and Morehead in Otterdale County. So just trying to, you know, we're trying to find that sweet spot of reasonable fees where we ensure that we cover our costs and our publication and legal notices and recording and some of those things, but not charging any more than we have to for development purposes. Tax increment financing on the bottom of that page, you can see that that's updated from 2,000 to 3,000, and the escrow amount went from 15,000 to 20,000, and that's in line with recent discussions that the councils had about TIF. So that's where that number's coming from. We're jumping way ahead, actually, to page eight. It's not.
Should we just see if there's any questions on the planning commission on that page while we're on it?
You bet.
Andrew?
You bet.
Any, is, is there any, does the 350 cover publication notices? So we aren't going to lose money on going down?
We shouldn't.
Right.
Yeah, the numbers are based on the publication costs and all conditional use permits. Will any of those permits require mailings as well? So that's been the more fluctuating cost, actually, is the mailings over the last five years, so that's why you see a little bit of change from one year to the next, just trying to account for the magnitude of mailings, which I think have evened out some, so I feel comfortable with the 350.
Thank you. And obviously, the council made the recommendation on the TIF. Whilst we're on there, did, did, did we want to look at tax treatment? Obviously, that's, that's 1,500 and 7,500. It's another economic tool. No, we'll move on. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, you bet. Page eight, this one's not highlighted in your packet, but I talked to, excuse me, I talked to Chief Mucko last night about the fun house rental. It's right towards the bottom of the page there. That's the Dalmatian bounce house that you've seen at events. We're going to remove that from the fee schedule and no longer offer that. That has kind of reached a point of condition where we don't feel comfortable having that in the public and being used by the public. So, we're going to retire that, and I don't know if we'll replace that in the near future. So we're looking to just strike that, and we'll have that updated for the packet on Monday.
On, on that page, the fire alarm activation, we go from the first to the fourth with no charge, and then the fifth, 100.
Yep.
Does that seem reasonable? I mean, the fact that somebody turns out, I mean, I get one, but if somebody has an alarm that keeps tripping, then, I mean, it's a pain, and obviously, we have to muster a vehicle and potentially at least one, if not two, people. So four times, that's, you know, if you said it's 100 bucks an hour.
Yeah, you know, a lot of times when we see these alarm activations like this, it's like new construction, so I'm not going to call anybody out, but we have a new building in town that's having a challenge with the fire alarm system, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed with the company. And they're troubleshooting, they're trying to get their feet off the ground, you know, so it's, it's turned into a lot of activations. And the first few, it's like, we want to work with you, we want to come out, see the space. It's, it's an opportunity for our department to get in the space and see kind of what they're working with, give them a little bit of chance to work out the bugs. We don't necessarily have to, you know, they're, they're more or less calling as soon as those second, third, fourth ones are activated. After we get to a certain point, and that's kind of what Ryan's identified as, you know, that's, that's educational, then it becomes either an annoyance or a burden, frankly, right? So we are sending resources, because we do have to be prepared to respond every time. We don't know if it's a false alarm or not. So that's typically when we see the repeated false alarms, is, is when they either install a new system, or it's like a new business, and, and the idea is like, give them a little bit of opportunity and time to work the kinks out of that. So that's, that would be my response. We certainly can do whatever. They can add up real quick. I know the, the business in question is getting the 150 dollars each time now, and it's happening pretty frequently, and you feel bad about it, and you, you hope it's resolved, but we are spending resources on that as well, so.
They need to talk to their provider.
Yeah, I think they're going to, I haven't heard the latest in the last week, but it's probably going to have to be replaced, the whole system, so we'll see what happens. Okay. Moving on to page 10, this is, you'll see a lot of changes on these pages. This is related to our parks and rec fees. I'll just go down to the park and rec program. So rookie tee ball going up $5 from 45 to 50, tee ball toss and girls' toss, they're currently 65, moving those up to 75. Minors is 75, majors is 75, those going up to 90. Adult softball league going up $25. Just really, we see program costs rising. We have to pay our temporary staff more on an annual basis, just covering costs with, with associated increases there, fairly incremental. Kids camp going from 225 for a two-week session to 230, still probably the best deal in town if you know what daycare costs are. Couple changes down in the picnic shelters and tables area. We're adding in a long-term rental for picnic tables at 175 dollars per table per week. That seems high, but these are very labor-intensive, and this is allowing people to keep those for a longer term and have those seasonal, per se. Bleacher rentals, we have four employees needed to move these bleachers, which is why you see kind of big rates on these as well. We're proposing 150 dollars per day, or 600 dollars seasonal. We had the, the local Hillcrest School request potentially renting bleachers for like the football season, add extra seating. That's where that 600 dollars would kick in, so they would give us 600 dollars to have that, those bleachers for the entirety of the football season. The Riverfront Pavilion, we've kind of just slowly been creeping that up to get it closer to market, but want to continue to see good usage there. We started, when it first opened at 100 dollars per day, we moved that up to 150, and now we're proposing 200 for next year. We continue to get feedback that it's extremely affordable, reasonable, and really a good option for people that have events. Youth sponsorships, to sponsor the teams, moving up 50 dollars, 300 to 350 dollars. Under the warming houses, this is a new one, youth sport rentals, looking at 75 dollars per month. The soccer team that uses Cleveland Field for soccer is using the warming house as a locker room, and so that would just be charging for the use of that facility per month. So, you know, three-month season, they're going to pay 75 times three. The next couple, the community arena hourly rates, those are consistent with the council's directive at the last council meeting, so moving the private rentals and arena rates from 195 dollars an hour for outside groups to 200 dollars an hour. Maybe I'll pause there on the park and rec and picnic tables and shelters and see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Your Honor, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. On the pavilion, if someone rents morning, let's say they want it from nine to one or something, and then someone else comes in five to nine in the evening, are we charging, when it says day, are we doing a reduced rate, or are we charging the day rate for like those blocks of time in the same day?
Guy, do you know?
It's the day rate.
Okay. Okay. So we're not prorating by hours, or, good, okay.
Your Honor, thank you. I would like to see some of them raised. I've shared my information with the administration, but I'd like to focus on the security deposits. I don't know what the lease shows or reads in regards to if I'm renting a facility. Would it be available that if I have an event at the Riverfront Pavilion, that I'm responsible for my garbage and removal, I'm trying to get less staff, city staff involved, or maybe have a higher deposit, and if they don't clean it up and they don't take their garbage, you know, it's, it's reflected in that lease agreement?
Anything is possible, Your Honor, Councilman Relate, anything is possible. There could be some complications, though, because, I'll give you an example, if somebody were going to use the facility on a Sunday morning, and the farmer's market's on Saturday, they leave at one, they clean up the garbage, there's an entire day from 1:00 PM Saturday to Sunday morning where the public is free to use the space.
And I appreciate that.
And they go to Uncle Eddie's, they fill the, garbage is maybe full come Sunday morning with no rentals in place, right? So then it would become a burden for somebody who is inheriting that problem. And so we do feel like we need to have staff there, especially on the weekends when we know it's heavily used, to make sure that when people are coming for that rented time, it's ready to go. If you, if the expectation is that the party renting takes the stuff when they leave, fine, but I don't know that it alleviates the issue of us having to, to do that check.
And again, these are just comments I've heard in regards to, obviously, the cost and time to do it, and then, I'm just trying to make it responsible for the, the party.
Yep. I appreciate that.
Then are all, all baseball teams covered with, with costs? I mean, in the sense that, you know, is there any activities that aren't, you know, where the facilities are free?
Yes, Your Honor, council members. A number of years ago, actually, it was during COVID, because I remember we were spread out in the room in a weird fashion. The Youth Baseball Association made the request that we waive the fees for fields for them to play, with the intent of providing those opportunities, making it affordable, supporting the additional resources and work they've done to the fields and improvements and, and some of those things. So Guy will have to assist me here as to what teams or ages or leagues are actually utilizing the fields without a rental fee, but there is a number of them. Do you know more specifics, or?
It started out three or four, now it's 10 or 11 teams.
So it is a significant number of teams and games that we aren't charging a fee out for at all, so we are covering those costs. So that, you know, that's something that the council could certainly talk about if, if they want to increase, you know, getting closer to covering costs.
Your Honor. Guy, didn't they put a bunch of money into it, though? I mean, that's what their reason was, and what was the reason? It started out at three, but then it expanded out to more, and I think we discussed this a couple of years ago.
Your Honor, Councilmember Rachel, I think their programs are growing. I think a lot of our sports, youth programs are growing, and, which is a great, great problem to have, right?
Go back to, didn't they put, they put some money into this? That's what they wanted, that's what, that's what I want to get out, it's not to be just giving it to them for free.
Yeah, they've done projects on a number of fields.
Yeah.
At their cost, so.
Right.
Been generous in that way. It's the regular maintenance that we're just not being able to cover.
Can we, for Monday evening, can we look at what we are? I mean, because obviously, if it started out at three to four and it's now, you know, it's tripled, you, you know, obviously, I mean, I, I received some calls this, this summer that, you know, the fields aren't prepped, and et cetera, et cetera. And it's like, well, you, you've got it for free, and, you know, you're complaining that it's not kind of, it's not kind of, you know, play-ready. So, I think we should look at what we are putting into it and see whether there's a kind of a nominal, a nominal charge to cover at least the prepping of the fields.
Their growth has also affected our numbers in the rec programs.
Yeah. So they're, so they're impeding revenue on, on, and, so you're shifting the players from one program to another program?
Well, I think, I just, to be fair, too, they're willing to help, right? And they've asked many times if they can prep the fields themselves and volunteer those hours, and it's, it's just a gray area, fine line between, you know, liability and all that stuff, and so we kind of walk that tightrope, so to speak, as much as we can, and we have had them do some things that, that have helped us out. It's, it's just finding that balance, I think. But I think it's, there's some validity to the conversation.
One of their board members is a fireman, so he's a city employee, so we allow him to use equipment.
Right. Thank you.
Your Honor, when you're talking about the field prep, you're talking about the infield?
Yes.
Dragging infield?
Dragging, chalking, mound maintenance, some of that stuff, yep.
It's a beautiful facility, and smaller communities aren't, have that luxury, but in some of the smaller communities, I've talked to these people, that they'll leave a drag there, and the guys who come will have a four-wheeler and they'll drag it themselves. We've never addressed chalk in other communities that I've been in. They don't drink too much beer, I think they know how to get to base one, but if there would be a drag there and someone came in with their own four-wheeler, I don't know if that would be appropriate or not. I don't know how bad it gets beat up in a game or multiple games.
I would say those, Your Honor, Councilman Relate, and those are the conversations that we're, that we've had and we're having with them. I think they've made similar requests to that, or just, you know, jump on the equipment we have. They certainly know how to operate it. It, it comes down to just covering liability, right, and where that falls. So, we've, it's been up and down, I guess, depending on who's involved and the volunteer time, and.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Last summer, they were more involved, or at least I was involved enough to know that they were more involved, and it seemed to work out fine, but, you know, then you got full-time staff who do things differently, and all of a sudden, there's some frustrations, and so just try, it's a balancing act like everything else. But I certainly appreciate their willingness to help and what they do.
Yeah. And there's enough aggregate in the infills? I mean, it's an expensive thing to maintain.
Yeah, we, we haul in agri-lime annually or bi-annually, twice, twice, every other year, maybe, significant amount of, of agri-lime, and we, we make sure the fields are, are in good shape. Summers like this are obviously a big challenge, when you're, you know, you're getting rain every other day, and that impacts field conditions, and, and that's another complicating factor is, you know, how much work actually has to go into getting the fields ready on a, on a dry summer. It's, like you say, you drag them, then you're ready to play. You know, it's not so easy this year, but, yeah, we, I think we have adequate agri-lime.
I don't know how many games are played out there, and it might be a little bit too much for this committee, but, you know, is this thing covering itself? By the time you, you know, if you will, the city staff preps it, you know, agri-lime coming in, I don't know how many games are played, I don't know how many, you know, and again, it's seasonal, but I don't, I haven't seen the revenue on softball, baseball diamonds compared to the expense.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilman Relate, I haven't done a deep dive. Bill, Bill would be able to probably help us with that.
I appreciate that.
But I will say this, I don't, I don't think there's many programs that, on the surface, cover themselves when it comes to recreation and, and park opportunities. That's one of the reasons why we have the sponsorships of the teams and the banners on the fences, and, you know, trying to find other revenue opportunities to get closer to break even, but I, I can tell you offhand without looking into it, we're not covering our costs on baseball fields.
Yeah, and again, I'm looking at not only the rentals of the field during practice or game, but again, also the, you know, the, the revenue from the signs, I just, and I appreciate what the, the city and the council have done in the past. It's a, it's a, it's a wonderful facility, but we threw in, I don't know how many millions that, I don't know how much the lighting system costs out there, but I mean, it's a beautiful park, so I think it's well-used and trying to grab just a little more revenue from them.
Fair enough.
I think Hicks and I were talking once, that, you know, per game, I don't know how many people are on a softball team, you got two teams there, you divide that 60 dollars between 10 guys, 20 guys, I mean, you can't buy a beer for that.
Right.
So I'm not afraid of raising those rates in regards to games. It's pretty cheap.
Well, we'll see what, we'll see what information we can bring back for Tuesday's council meeting on, in that regard. Your Honor, beyond that, I think that covers the proposed changes, so I appreciate the council's attention this morning and good questions and good dialogue.
Thank you.
Mayor? I just missed one question earlier on, and I was expecting to see on page nine some attention to the landfill fees for particularly demolition debris as we look at the future of replacing our demolition cell. We've had conversations about the cost of that, and I thought that we would perhaps see an increase there, and if not, some explanation as to how this is still going to get us where we need to go for covering our future costs on that replacement of that cell. So maybe Bill could bring some information on that on Tuesday.
And I can touch on a high level, Your Honor, Councilmember Kwame, a couple of things. One, we increased rates in anticipation of the new cell, so we're maybe a little bit ahead of that. Two, pricing came in better than expected on construction of the cell. And three, and probably most importantly or most concerning, is that our collection for this year in our demolition debris area is, is down significantly. And we need to figure out if that is attached to this rate, or if that's attached to industry, economy, industry, building industry. On first glance, we feel it's probably both. We're significantly higher than all the area landfills because we have the line sell and they don't. We know there'll be a point in time where they catch up, right? So, we're trying to, trying to like, keep things as stable as we can with that in mind. We've also heard from the building trades that, and I'm not going to get any specifics on this, but they have seen a decrease in, in business or activity at like lumberyards, per se, building materials, that the percentage of their decline in sales is almost identical to the percentage in decline that we see in the demo cell at the landfill. So, you know, there's certainly some, some connection there, I think, as well, from just an economy standpoint. People are doing less building and doing less projects, which translates to less building material into the landfill. So, we weren't quite ready to move these rates anymore until we got a good comfort level or good feeling on how we remain viable and competitive in that space at the current rate.
And just on.
I'm sorry, very good information. I also wasn't analyzing, you know, if it was the demo usage this year versus previous years, and you brought it to our attention that it is down. To follow up Mr. Kwame's position, is there a way to increase the non-resident rates?
Oh, you certainly could do that. Certainly could do that. I, I, again, though, you're competing with, I mean, we're hearing feedback that people are willing to drive their waste to Henning, to North Dakota, and, you know, if, if you're on the fringe and you live five miles west of Fergus Falls, and the higher we go, the more likely it is you're going to go west, right, and you're going to go to North Dakota. So, it's that balance. Do we want the waste, or do we want the revenue?
I was just going to ask you, do you want the waste?
I, I'm not, I'm not the one to answer that. I'll refer to Guy on that.
We have the capacity. Yeah? We'll take the waste and we'll take the revenue.
Yeah. It's not just going into the landfill, it's, you're, you're moving it someplace?
The demolition debris does go into the landfill.
Yes, yeah. But the rest of it is, is getting rotated, yeah, thank you.
I think the other thing to consistency, the photocopies at the library, the library costs is like, obviously, 1.1 million dollars a year to operate. The, the cost of a copy at City Hall is 25 cents, and at the library it's 20 cents, so maybe we could go 25 cents, and I, I wonder if like, the replacement library card is three bucks, whether we could move that to like five bucks?
Yeah, I, I would, Your Honor, let me invite Gail for Tuesday night, because I honestly don't know if there's like a Viking library system rule in place on, on what they can charge for that. I, I don't know enough, admittedly, about the specifics of that, but let's, let's invite Gail on Tuesday and have her address those questions.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Right, the, I suppose we should have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday evening, if somebody would care to make that. Thank you, Jim. Somebody can say the second name?
Second.
Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. As there's items to discuss, it obviously will not go on the consent agenda. The next item is a sculpture walk selection, called upon Naomi, a recommendation to the council to approve the 2026 sculpture walk sections as recommended by Public Arts Commission. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, council members, and Mayor Hicks. We had the opportunity to meet last Thursday with the Public Arts Commission with the applications that we had from regional artists and also local artists, and the. And the PAC did go forth and choose the six sculptures that will be replaced in May of 2026 when we rotate out the current six sculptures that we have in place downtown on Lincoln. The PAC is asking that the committee has looked at these sculptures and the artists. And you can see that we have a great variety of different types of sculptures that would be placed downtown that would also fit in with all age groups as well. So we are very conscious of the sculptures that we are choosing and also the variety and making sure that we are including local artists with also regional. And our call did go out for Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, North Dakota, and South Dakota. And we are actually the first sculpture walk in our region to have the first call. So we had an opportunity to get some of the best sculptures to pick from. So I'm excited, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Your Honor, do you have a question?
Laurel, go ahead. Last year, when the sculpture walk was introduced, there was a lot of excitement about the one in particular in front of the Children's Museum.
Yes.
The leopard or the cat.
Guardian number two, which is a tiger, yep.
Tiger, there you go. And there was conversation about that becoming a permanent installation there. There were people interested in seeing that one stay because of its connection with the kids and stuff. And should something like that happen and you're still looking at six new ones, would we be adding another location someplace else? Or has any decision been made on that one? Just wondering what you can tell us about that.
Absolutely. Great question. And yes, the Otter Cove is actually looking for someone who would actually donate to purchase Guardian number two, the tiger sculpture for them, which would include the pedestal as well. And so when we would get the revenue from that sculpture and that purchase, then we would be able to have the funds to be able to purchase a new limestone slab that would then go down towards where Cali is located right now so that we would have something on the end where we've started right on Lincoln and Union and then continue down to go down Lincoln to the very end there. And so then we would have seven for our sculpture walk. And our hopes is that as people continue to see the sculptures, possibly purchase the sculptures for their public or private collections, then that is how we can hopefully continue to grow the sculpture walk itself.
That echoed my question a little further. Have any others sold this year? I guess would be one thing I'm interested on.
So we did have Riverdale in an agreement, and they were going to go forth. And then at the last minute, the woman did say that she wanted to remove her offer and that they will revisit it in the spring. But I have a actual garden group in Madison, Wisconsin, who are interested in purchasing it for their club that they have at the Botanical Gardens. UW Madison is one of their grounds where they have the public gardens. And so we're going to revisit that with them because they want to be able to do a payment plan each month. And so I'm trying to have that conversation with the artists to make sure that they're comfortable with that moving forward.
What are the ranges that they're asking for the art?
It is anywhere from 3,000, and I believe Tom, the bronze sculpture from Blaze Buseth, off the top of my head, I believe, is 12K. And just to remind everyone that these take hours and hours to make, the material itself. And so paying the artists the worth of the sculptures is important. And that's where you can see there's a variety of different price points, too, which I think is important for the public to see.
The bronze is very expensive. I know.
Absolutely, yes.
It adds up. So it is very labor-intensive.
Yes, yes.
I think, all being said, I mean, I think it's been a great addition to downtown. And I just make sure that the committee is, you know, lets them know we all appreciate what it's done for downtown. And I think, as you say, if we can get some, if Guardian can stay and make it seven, then hopefully, as you say, it can grow, which is a positive thing. So with that, would somebody care to make the motion to?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Laurel, and thank you, Al.
I think what's kind of neat is it was a year ago that we were talking about this, I think. And now we're talking about it longer than that, but now it's coming around again.
It was actually back in January that we were talking about this. And that's why the PAC, you know, has contracted me out because we had such a short span of time to get the program going, implemented, and application process going. And then I was speaking to the other sculptors from across the region, and they said, you should get your next application out sooner so that you can get the prime sculptures and that people can apply. And so that is something that we worked on to make sure that we were the first ones because it was two weeks after we had our announcement, that's when Sioux Falls, South Dakota, had theirs. And they're one of the largest sculpture walk programs in the nation. So, yeah.
Your Honor?
How much are those bases? I'm sorry.
Who's talking?
I want to commend the committee fabulous, absolutely fabulous. That's all I can say. Give everybody kudos.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think Al's question was how much are the bases?
They are 2,000.
Right. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. The motion is approved. Everybody good with this to be on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
And then Mayor Hicks, may I just remind everyone that the Public Arts Commission, Council Kwame asked me to speak about the paintings that are hanging up in the council chambers here, who are by Kim Embertson, who is a local artist in our community and also the chair of the Public Arts Commission. And so I just wanted to highlight his beautiful landscape paintings that he has. And they will be rotating out again next month for a new artist coming in. And I just know that no one's talked about them yet, as Kwame informed me. And so I just want to make sure that everyone recognizes those as well. Thank you.
Your Honor, are these available for sale too, so the public knows? Or are these private collection?
Clara?
These are, these in particular are from the library collection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, the next item on the agenda is the Minnesota Paid Family and Medical Leave called upon Alicia. And the recommended action is for the council to contract with MetLife to administer the Paid Family Medical Leave Act. Over to Alicia.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good morning, council members. As Mayor Hicks had stated, that I would like to recommend that we enroll in the equivalent MetLife program instead of going with the state of Minnesota plan. The Minnesota Paid Leave Act was enacted in May of '23. Updates were made in May of 2024, which the Earn Sick and Safe Time was implemented during that time, which gave time for the state of Minnesota to work toward the January 1 of '26 law that will go into effect regarding the Minnesota Paid Leave Law. This is split between employees and employer. The state of Minnesota has a minimum of 50% that will be covered by the employer. We have an option to go with a decreased percent through MetLife at .79%, which split 50% would be .395% for employer and employee instead of the .88% that would be current with the Minnesota policy. I have included some attachments with that. That kind of gives a breakdown of the current states that are going or currently with the Paid Leave Law. And then also area counties that are currently utilizing the equivalent plan and a breakdown of the Minnesota State Plan versus the MetLife Plan that I am recommending. Any questions regarding this?
Somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Laura.
I can second that.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions of Alicia? And just a reminder that this is obviously another state law that got implemented that we have an obligation to do. And so it's not something we can opt out of. So it's looking for the most efficient and cost-effective way to administrate it.
Correct.
What does Met, what will MetLife do?
MetLife will be in place of the Minnesota policy. And it gives the opportunity to have quicker return for the employees if they do elect to apply for this, which is up to two days versus two weeks if they're looking through the Minnesota policy in reimbursement. So it acts equivalently to the Minnesota policy. It's just at a better rate opportunity for us as the employer.
Help me with this. So if I'm an employee of the city and I want to participate...
You don't have a choice.
So much of the money goes into the Met...
You're obligated to participate.
Pardon?
You're obligated to participate.
Yes. So MetLife takes the money and invests it, or the money stays local? Are they just administering, you know, the amount that an employee gives or provides? And then how much they use? I'm trying to figure out what MetLife or the city does.
Yep, so MetLife would receive the premium from the employer and the employee, and then in turn would cover the cost of claims. Currently, most of the people that are going into this equivalent plan are from the state of Minnesota.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you can send me any information on this, because it's totally green for me.
Yes, absolutely. I can do that.
Thank you.
Event roll call. We have a motion. Laura Jobe and Laurel Kelly made a motion.
In favor, say aye.
Please say aye.
Okay.
All in favor.
All in favors. Okay, sorry. Let's see where you're going. It's quarter to eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. We'll go to council. Everybody good with the consent agenda?
Yep.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a MinDOT Cooperative Construction Agreement called upon Kyle, a recommendation to the council to enter into MinDOT Contract 1059845 regarding Trunk Highway 210 Roundabout Trail and aesthetic construction for the local cost share and authorized signatures on the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We received this agreement from MinDOT. This is the agreement for the interchange project, which will consist of roundabouts, bridge replacement on the interstate and Trunk Highway 210. And this agreement lays out what the local share for that project is going to be, as well as what some of the future responsibilities are with snow removal and maintenance of the improvements. So I've sat down with Mr. Brimseth and Mr. Taylor, walked through those. As I went through the agreement, there was also some questions that I had that we did discuss with MinDOT. So if we could go to page one of the agreement, under item...
That's the one thing you did.
Okay. No worries. It's in your packet. But if you go to page one in the agreement, item number three, it states in there that the city requested to do, or sorry, item number four, the city requested to do construction engineering on the project. As you remember, last council meeting, we approved an agreement with MinDOT to do the utility improvements, which that took care of our responsibility for those inspections with the utilities. They will allow the owner to inspect the utilities that are within the project right of way, which we are doing with that project. There is no utility work associated with this piece of the project that we would be able to inspect. So that will be stricken out of this agreement. As well as on page two, under 2.2B, there's a section in there that lays out construction, engineering, and inspection by the city. That will be taken out as well. And because of that, there will be, there was a 3% amount that the city was going to be responsible for on that red lane interchange roundabout, which would be the city portion. So that's going to go from 3% to 8%. So this number will go up approximately $32,000 based on the numbers within this agreement. So those will be changed within the next week or so. So everything else within the agreement is as is. So today, I would recommend that we approve the agreement with those changes forthcoming.
Your Honor, maybe I'll add one more thing. The language that Kyle's talking about being removed from the agreement was put in there in error by the district office. Central office of St. Paul made the final ruling that that can't be part of it, and we cannot actually inspect on the state project, which is why we're seeing that go from 3% to 8% because the state does the inspection and then we have to pay that percentage related to what would be considered our portion of that project. They do not allow the local jurisdiction to do their own inspection or oversight, so...
Correct.
It was kind of a, it was in there in error by the district office, which was corrected by St. Paul.
Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions?
Yeah, Your Honor, what's the bottom line going to be then for the city's obligation?
Bottom line will be, so we're at 868 now, so it'll be up just over 900,000.
And when is this project coming?
It will start next spring.
'26.
Bid letting will be in November. Construction will start next spring.
Okay.
And I've been asked many questions about this project. When is it going to end? I mean, you can't believe the phone calls and stuff, and I said, I don't know.
Yep. And we asked that question yesterday. The completion date was October of next fall.
Oh, one season.
One season.
Good.
Good deal.
The bridge work is what's going to depict that completion date. That's going to be the deciding factor on the completion date. Yep, one season.
Is there any timeframe in there where we'll lose the exits off of '94?
I don't know what the exact, you know, when they're doing those, if they're going to close them or reroute them. I haven't seen that yet.
Do we know the funding source for the 900,000?
I know a portion of it's coming from Minnesota's state aid that we get. I think we have $700,000 lined up for that. The rest of it, I'd have to verify with Bill.
We have the federal grant through the T-Aid program for the trail portions, which I don't remember off the top of my head.
Maybe for Monday, Monday evening, Bill can kind of give the rundown on the funding mechanism.
Yep.
I think it'll get brought up, so.
So the bottom line is it's 900,000 to the city?
Yes.
We're obligated?
Yep.
To fund that, yes?
Correct. Yep.
This is maybe a technical question. Let's say we levy for it or we bond for it, whatever we do, and then in '26, they don't do it. And they push it into '27. I don't know what it would do inside the city.
I think you just said that 700,000 is state aid and 200,000 is a trail potentially. So we wouldn't be bonding for it. It would be money coming into the city from third-party agencies.
So really, if it doesn't happen in '26, for whatever reason, and goes into '27...
Right. As of right now, I know in our discussions with MinDOT, they are asking, so this project will be let in November. The plan is to start it next construction season. They, we will be obligated to make our payment to MinDOT this winter timeframe before construction starts. Now, if it doesn't go and is pushed back, I'm assuming our money would sit there until the project goes?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. We'll bring it back Monday night. We'll leave it off the consent agenda so we can talk on the funding. Thank you. The next item is project updates, again by Kyle.
All right. Give you an update on where we are with some of the construction that's going on in town. Want to start it off first by looking at our website. We've got some new information up on the website. When you go into the utility projects within the website, it's going to-- so yeah, this would be the city of Fergus Falls website. You can click on utility projects, and now it's going to bring you to Fergus Falls city projects page, which has a map. If you scroll down a little bit, there's a city map there with different pins throughout the city showing where the different projects are. And so we can scroll down and go to the different projects within each project. Then we have a blow-up of the area where the project is, as well as some information on the project. And then we do-- what we're doing is we're doing updates on each project. So we can go in there. We've got some pictures of where the project was at, at that update, and what some of the upcoming work is being done. If there's any detours or parking issues, we make sure that we're putting those within the updates. So with all the projects within the community, this will be up there. This is something that we're going to continue to maintain throughout time. We will continue to add projects and take projects off as they're finished or starting. So-- and even new projects that are coming up, we'll probably even show where those are in design so that people are able to see ahead of time what the city's working on and what's out there. And what I like about this is that with that main map up front, it shows all the different things that we're doing within the community and shows what's really going on around town. So I think it'll be a nice way for the residents to see what's happening, or for anybody that wants to look and go through and see what's happening, and we'll keep these up to date, so. All right. Now I'll maybe switch over to PowerPoint now. Give you a little bit of update on what's happening out there and where we are with some of the different things. So I'm going to start out with Fur Freiberg Roundabout. That is a county project, but that project's making some headway. I don't know if you've been able to drive by it, but a lot of the concrete work was completed over this week and last week, and getting pretty close to finishing that up. The plan was to get that finished up here, maybe even today, and then potentially pave here the end of this week, and maybe open up to temporary traffic by the weekend, so a lot happening there in the last week or so. So that'll be exciting for that to happen. Switching over to Junius, just a block away from here. There's three blocks of utility work and road work that's being completed on this project. Right now, the utility work is still being completed. The water main and sanitary sewer is being installed. We've got one block finished, and they switched over to the other side of the project, installing sanitary sewer yesterday. Couple pictures there, they're putting some pipe in. And probably another couple weeks yet of utility improvements before they start working on subgrade and streets to follow. And the goal there looks like probably early October before that job is finished. Mill and overlay project. This project, just the nature of it, it's a pretty quick project. Mill the streets and add some new asphalt onto it. This project is almost finished, is actually today, it probably is finished. I was out there the other day, went through a couple pictures up there. You can see the new asphalt on the road. The lower pictures, that was some streets they were working on yet. You can see the tack coat that they put down prior to putting the layer of new asphalt down. That tack coat is an oil that, when the new hot asphalt goes on top of it, makes it stick to that late-- that old layer with the new layer. So they had a few blocks remaining to finish up. That project's probably finished up as of today, so went really well. Shoreview Drive project, that was an existing asphalt street where we were paving and putting pavement over the top of it. So today, they've installed the base layer of asphalt on the street, and they're working on raising iron. So what they do is they cut out those areas where the gate valves and the inlet, or in the manholes and R, and they raise those up to the new elevation. And now they'll come through and pave that second elevation, or that second lift of asphalt, and then those elevations will be perfect with the new infrastructure. So within the next couple of weeks, that job will be finished up as well.
It'll be nice to have a smooth road. My wife loves to hit all of them.
Yes, it will be nice, for sure. And then--
Yeah.
Yep. And then moving over to Scenic Drive. This was a project where we installed some additional sanitary sewer and water main to bring service to some new lots out there. So again, quick project. That project, the utility work is all completed. The gravel's been put back on the road, and seating has been done. So that project is completed.
When is that road going to be complete? Because it's--
When is it going to be paved?
No. When is it--
Oh.
What's there now is not very good.
Okay. Yeah. We'll take a look. We'll probably get a punch list and make sure that, you know, something gets fixed up there.
That one driveway is not completed yet either, so--
Sure.
I golf with the individual that lives there, so I hear about it all the time.
Needs to be fixed up.
Yep.
There's no favors for golfing buddies.
So that's the projects that have happened so far. We've got a couple out there yet that need to start yet. The landfill, you know, we've got bids coming in on the alleyways, and the utility relocates up on Highway 210. So still a few things out there yet to finish up. And the, yeah, and the railroad crossing projects. That'll be starting next week.
Is this seal coating?
Seal coat's starting tomorrow, yes.
Your Honor--
Yep.
Kyle, thank you. I'm a strong advocate of this report coming to council, more so importantly for the public to see what you've done. Also, I anticipate, I hope that you'd have some slides as to where we're moving. I think the open transparency in the information would help the city understand that things are getting done. You know, not necessarily my pothole, but things are getting done. And I hope that this presentation comes monthly to the council for the benefit of the public and ourselves. I talked to Lynn here a couple weeks ago and saw some of the pictures that they've done, and it's remarkable. And if you don't see it, you don't witness it because you worked during the day, you don't know what's been done. And being it on the city website, I'm totally in favor of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will continue to provide updates like this, obviously seasonally, right? There's not much happening when it's frozen, but we are going to have a work session on Tuesday at 4:00 before the council meeting with the goal of talking about 2026 projects and identifying what those are. More Engineering has done a lot of work and a really good job of identifying some of the top needs of state aid streets, local streets, mill and overlays, reconstructions, and they have a nice tool that we can use to really lay out a solid path forward. I think you guys will be pleased with the work that's been done, but also able to look at that and make some decisions going forward, which will give staff and Kyle the direction they need to get ahead of these things. It's not lost on any of us that it's going to be September, and there's a few projects that are yet to start. Our goal for next year and beyond is to get these things out for bid November, December, January, have a contractor here the day after road restrictions are lifted, and hit the ground running to get these things done. Not only will that allow more favorable pricing, it will allow less anxiety towards the end of the year as weather starts to turn a little bit, then-- and then we can, you know, having the plan more fleshed out and kind of laid out, we're able to be very open and transparent and keep everybody informed on what's happening. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
Congratulations on the steps. One other thing I'd like to see on the website is the lead map. I don't know if that would be something that you could throw up there. I don't think it should be on your first map because it's way too busy, but-- or a link to that.
Yeah, that is within the GIS map, so it would be fairly easy to put that up there.
That would be nice. Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have a question as well. Thank you for the city website updates. That's very helpful. Is that something that when we send out in utility bills corporately, or however often we do the updates, that we can draw attention to that being new on our website so people know to go to look for it, that don't watch this meeting? And then the other piece would be, can we, at the point that projects are completed, instead of removing them, like you said, we'll update and we'll take things off, can we change to have like a different color icon for completed in the last two to four years or something like that, and then put pictures of completed projects on there? So citizens don't only see what's active, but they also see what's completed.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Or just even archive folder?
Right. Exactly. Something where they don't just go away.
Right.
Thank you.
Scott, you got a question?
Last night at the town hall, one question came up that I think could just get added to your list of things to tell us about when you've got some news, and that was the dairy property and the work with the railroad to get the crossings put in so that we can move forward on the development of that area.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I can give an update on that. We have had some discussions with that. We are looking to set up a meeting with MinDOT to talk about some additional crossings that the railroad is looking at having us do. And the meeting with MinDOT that we want to have is going to revolve around where can we find additional funding for some of these additional crossings? So that's coming up. We'll see, you know, what we can find and what we can come up with, but we're trying to set that meeting up now. But we can give additional updates as that moves forward.
Thank you, Kyle. I know there's people-- there's a couple of people who need to leave at 8:00, so announcements--
You know, I got one. I know it's going to be quick, Al, just hang on. We got to talk about this cannabis ordinance on Monday night. I'm sorry, Al. Or Tuesday night, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of talk and a lot of things going on with opening this thing up to any or as many as you want or whatever, but with the borders and the zones that we have, I don't think it's going to go too far open, but we'd allow-- we could allow three downtown the way it is now, and then the rest out in the B6 zone, I believe. And so I just want to see if there's an appetite for that to be discussed, or send Rolfe to open it up on Monday night. Send something to Rolfe. I don't know if we got to make a motion for that, or just have a discussion on that, or-- Andrew, can you help me on that?
Talk about in the work session.
You could. I mean, it's up to you if you want to make a motion and see if the council goes in that direction. I guess I don't know what the intent is.
Can we make a change if the council wanted to at the second reading, or we have to do it now, or how would that work?
Probably either way, but if the council intends to make a change for the sake of transparency, it would be better to--
And that's--
--so that later some public could have the ability to weigh in.
That's why I want to talk about it, just for transparency-wise. So I'll make a motion, then we open up or change the second reading to open this up to unlimited cannabis stores, which sounds like a lot, but with the zones in place and the radiuses we have on the schools and the playgrounds and stuff, it would be very little. But just see what the appetite is. I just want to put it out there and see if anybody wants to go for it or not.
So do we have a second for it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lauren.
That conversation.
Discussion.
Is anybody going to change their mind in the next week then, again?
I don't think that's necessary.
I don't know where we're at on this thing.
Nobody knows where we're at, I don't think, on this thing.
For clarification, so staff knows what your motion is, if I'm understanding you correctly, would be where our existing ordinance today says must give one, can give up to two. We've had the dialogue about must give two because of the new interpretation. So what you're saying then is that must give two would be removed--
Right.
--and there would be no limit or no cap on the number that the council could grant.
Right.
Okay.
But in essence, it would technically-- I think what you're saying is it would be capped because of the setbacks and how far away from each other they would be.
What are the setbacks now? Did that get changed again?
So we did the first reading at the last council meeting to 500 and 1,000, which is the max. So you're suggesting the 500 and 1,000 would stay, and because of that, it's restrictive enough that you're wanting to go to no cap?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we all--
Mr. Bremseth, where are we at on the first come, first served?
That's gone. That's gone away.
Yes.
We're to a matrix program selection.
So, Your Honor, one more comment. I'm sorry. I don't want to complicate this, but I just want to make sure we don't have staff in a pickle. If this was approved and this was changed, then in essence, the matrix and the scoring would be irrelevant because you guys could approve-- you wouldn't have to pick two out of X number of applicants.
I don't know if we should be voting on this right now because it seems like it's being sprung on. I think there's a work session coming up on Tuesday at 4:00. Maybe it could go into something like that, and so we can discuss it before people look foolish in front of the public. That's where I'm at with this.
Well, let me just say where I'm at is it was also sprung on us on August 4th with the first come, first served.
And that's why you changed your vote on it, because you didn't know what you voted for?
And now we've had some time to really reflect.
You shouldn't vote if you don't know what you're voting for. That's why I'm doing this.
And so this is just a vote to discuss-- if we wanted to open the discussion, that's all it was. There's so much stuff going on, we're going to, you know-- we went back from being our metric system or whatever, merit system, to first come, first served, now we're back to merit system. It just-- let's just open it up because there's nothing-- it's just going to go back and forth. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a point of order. Was your motion to bring it to the council meeting for discussion or the work session? Because if we're having a work session, we already have an agenda planned.
To the council meeting. Council. Council meeting.
Two big topics in.
Well, I think the way I interpreted the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have the city attorney change it for the second--
Change it for opening it up. Exactly right.
If this is approved, I would tell Rolfe the new draft that's in the packet for Tuesday night should reflect this change now, and that's what the council is going to be voting on.
And that's what you need to vote on today. If you don't want to vote for it, if you don't want it, then vote for it. If you want it, vote for it. I wish more than someone's here, but he's not.
Well, and that works that way, and not everybody can be here.
No, no. I know-- I feel bad for him, but just--
I think that it needs to be discussed before voting on this in the next council meeting. We've got less than a week here that we're going to be voting on that. You know, there again, it almost gets laughable how things are going with this because the interpretations change, and then there's also the statutes that come out with the state, and then that's debatable. The rules, the regs, and then people don't know what they're voting for when they do vote here on the city council. I think we need to know exactly what we're voting for.
We are voting for it to open it up. The regs say we have one, or they have two. Now we can do whatever we want.
So it doesn't get discussed on Monday night?
And we'll go for this. But we should have it-- vote it on on Monday night if you don't want to do it, I guess is my deal. But we should make a motion to make a motion for--
So we have a motion on the table to basically strike the language of issuing one and up to two to basically unlimited. So all those in favor say aye.
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 I think we have-- can we raise a hand just to clarify? So we have five. All those again, same sign.
Aye.
So it's five to two, so the motion is approved. It will go to council on Monday evening.
Your Honor, and that topic on Monday evening, can we also, with the change--
How about Tuesday evening?
Or Tuesday evening.
Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Jim. Can we also look at those new setbacks and get maps with those new circles to see what areas, especially out in B6, would be affected by those increased setbacks? Because I'm a little concerned about-- Lincoln touches a lot of things with those new setbacks, and so we want to make sure we're not doing something that the council's not fully aware that we're doing. Sorry. Kyle.
There goes your Labor Day.
Your Honor, one final-- I don't-- I reviewed the grid, if you will, the grading system, and it's too subjective. I agree with Mr. Krameyer that there is no urgency to place these licenses under the state of Minnesota law. I don't know if supplies are available yet at a wholesale level. It is a moving target. I think we're setting ourselves up for, you know, I don't know, more embarrassment, if you will. I don't believe that the grid is very subjective, is too subjective to favor one over the other.
Well, we tried first come, first served, and that didn't work either, so.
It did for a week.
Anyway, announcements, most city offices and facilities will be closed for observation of Labor Day on Monday. Garbage and recycling that would be picked up Monday will be collected up Tuesday. Tuesdays will take place on Wednesday. Tuesday at 4:00, we have a work session on capital improvement plan that's talked about today, followed by a council meeting at 5:30. And then September 10th is committee of the whole meeting. With that, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
I just want to tell you guys good luck in your economic development.